I'd like to call the June 24, 2021 Myamisburg City Schools School Board Meeting to order. Do you have a motion? Do you have a motion?
No.
Wait, oh, the Pledge of Legions, yeah, that's right. Okay. Stand for the Pledge of Legions. I know.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now roll call, please. Mr. Amsler?
Here.
Mrs. Angel?
Here.
Mrs. Neese?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Toadvine?
Present.
I'm present. Mr. Homan?
Here.
Dr. Blessing is absent. Next we go to the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I may we adopt the agenda, June 24, 2021.
Second.
Okay, first by Toadvine, second by Amsler. And roll call, please. Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
And next we go to the approval of minutes. The recommended action is to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting held on May 20, 2021, and the special board meeting held on June 8, 2021. Do I have a motion?
I'll move for the approval of minutes for the regular board meeting held on May 20, 2021, and the special board meeting held on June 8, 2021.
I'll second. Okay, first by Lewis, second by Angel.
Glad to see you could make it, Joe.
I never entered to the bells before.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Right, next we move to the approval of the financial reports. Recommended action is the approval of the financial reports dated May 31, 2021, and June 30, 2021. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the financial reports.
Second.
First by Angel, second by Lewis. Well, we have the June, I have the June reports there for your approval, um, and the June general fund reports as well as the permanent improvement report. Those are preliminary because we're still taking money for the rest of the month, and in accordance with board policy and Ohio Revised Code, making deposits as we should. So there will be changes, but hopefully it'll just be better. Um, and so, um, unless anybody has any questions, we did really well. We came out better than we expected, so I'm pretty pleased.
And while there will be money coming in, you don't see expenditures going out at this point?
No, if there are, they're going to be very minimal because we've only got a few days left in the year, so. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call. Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Okay, next we have recognition of citizens, staff, and students. I don't know that we have anything, do we?
I don't see any green sheets, no.
Do you want to read them?
You want to do the retiree first?
Well, okay, sure. All right, we'll go on to the recognition of appreciation of the retirees. It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt resolutions of appreciation for the following employees. And we'll start with Jennifer Schneider, 13 years, and Karen Vingress, 20 years. Do I have a motion?
We're not letting them retire.
I move we recognize the appreciation of the retiring employees.
Second.
Okay, first by Angel, second by Amsler. And we'll start out with Jennifer Schneider first. Jennifer, a resolution of appreciation. Jennifer Schneider, come on up. Has rendered 13 years' service to the students of Myamisburg City Schools, and Jennifer Schneider's performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out her duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement. And whereas Jennifer Schneider has distinguished herself as a lunchroom employee and cook, now therefore it be resolved that the Myamisburg City Board of Education passes resolution as a token of its appreciation for her outstanding conduct, and that such resolution become part of the permanent minutes of said Board of Education. 13 years.
Congratulations.
Did you say anything?
You could just say a few words.
Well, I do appreciate you all. I mean, I had a wonderful time working at school. It was a job that made me in my life, started, and made my friends, and made relationships with all the rest of my life. And I'm so grateful for all the work you did, and really love what you're doing.
Yeah, and you were very instrumental, I know, in the Band and Guard Program over the years and serving in different capacities and that, and always volunteering. And you'll be missed, but don't worry, we know where you live. You can always come back and sub for us and all that. No, you've been, you've been so faithful and dedicated to us and the students and staff to the district, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Enjoy retirement. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
And Karen, do you want to come on up? Karen Vingress. Now, the resolution of appreciation. Karen Vingress has rendered 20 years' service to Myamisburg City Schools, and whereas Karen Vingress, Vingress's performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out her duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement. And whereas Karen Vingress has distinguished herself as a teacher in the Myamisburg City School District. Now, therefore it be resolved that the Myamisburg City School Board of Education passes this resolution as a token of its appreciation for her outstanding conduct, and that such resolution become part of the permanent minutes of said Board of Education. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're going to love Sunday nights. You're going to love Sunday nights.
Thank you. So, roll call, please. Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Next we move on to board discussion, and it is the K-12 School Consultants Contract LLC. Tina Hagaman.
Um, during cabinet, we discussed where have our students gone? Um, as you know, we've lost 400-plus students in the last nine years. And what do we do to get those students back or track them down? Um, one of those avenues that we've discussed is this K-12 Consulting Services. Um, there's a lot of places named K-12, but, you know, these are, uh, this is a service that actually tracks down your kids. So Stacy had sent out some letters to our kids that were online or at a different district, and we got a lot of those letters backed, you know, because the addresses were no longer valid. So that made us go, hmm, maybe some of these kids aren't our kids anymore that we're paying for, so these guys can help us track them down. They're, the reason why it's not on the board agenda for approval this evening is there's a list of different services that they provide. They do everything from verifying your SF-14s for special ed to actually knocking on people's doors and blah, blah, blah. So we want to, as a cabinet, sit down and figure out what services are really needed here before we present it to the board. But we wanted to have an open discussion with the board so that you're aware that we are looking at ways to find, find out where our kids have gone and how to get them back. Um, so unless you guys have any questions, sort of brief and to the point. So they have a lot more resources than we do. They can use the police and others to figure out where things are at. So we think that it'd be advantageous to figure out where our kids are. So if they're not truly our kids anymore, then we're not paying for them, so, yeah.
This is the group that we talked about at that, the last special meeting we had, correct?
Yes. Yes. So once we decide what, you know, because Katie and Mary Ann do a great job on the SF-14s and SF-6s, so we don't probably need those services. But we want to have that discussion to make sure we, we have a complete contract to present to the board.
Well, and with as many students as we've lost, if we can find even 50 of these that aren't ours, that saves us a ton of money.
Correct.
So that would be good.
Yes, and all the discussions so far that have gone back and forth about the new biennium budget, doesn't look like we're going to get the fair funding model, but we may be looking at something where they're actually counting kids again. So the good news is that if that is the case, then our half-time kindergarteners that are now full-time with your full-day kindergarten, I want to call it all day, so full-day kindergarten students will be picked up as one. But then we want to make sure we get kids back enrolled that need to be enrolled.
Well, uh, well, talking to our representatives, uh, helped, do you think, with that?
I'm not sure. I know that, um, you know, Anne and I have reached out to Niraj and, and Mr. Johnson, right? If I'm getting names right here today. They've all, they've both been very supportive. Um, so I don't think that, I think they're going to make a decision tomorrow is what they're saying. Um, now whether or not that happens, I'm not sure. But wait and see. They're going to wait till the very last minute, so we're going to go, going to keep an eye on it. Hopefully we'll have something by June 30. That's when they're required by statute to have it done, but they're the lawmakers. They can push it off. They can change the deadline if they like, but, um, so hopefully we'll have some kind of news on the funding formula.
And while, while our local people are saying they're for it,
there are those out there in the state that are not for it.
Correct.
And many of them are for non-public schools. We want to make sure that they are funded.
No, and I'm, I'm friends with our local ones, you know, I mean, I have been for years, but I was thinking more along the lines of reaching out to people outside our own areas. You know, that's native people.
I mean, if we, if we have those contacts, I think that's certainly a good thing to do. I mean, we put it, I wrote a, an letter to the editor for the local paper. You know, we, we've done what we can, so, yeah. I hope that it's better than what they, the Senate put out because theirs was only an additional $90 per student over two years. And that's, with inflation, we, that's not, that's not acceptable. So hopefully, when we see a final, it'll, it'll be advantageous to us, so.
So is it true that we do have about 200 students that are either at community schools or doing open enrollment into another district? Is that about right?
I, I didn't look at the last count, but I'd say it's a little, about 200, a little more, maybe? Yeah, roughly. We lost 200 between last year and this year. So, yeah.
Part of that could be COVID, too.
Yes, and that's what we're hoping. When we start school, August 11th, is that the right date? 12th?
16th.
16th, boy, I'm, that's teachers come back on the 10th or 11th. Okay, so when we start school on the 16th, we're hoping that those kids that were out for COVID will be back face-to-face. Um, and if that's not the case, we're hoping that this company will help, help us track them down.
I was just thinking, even if you got 3% of what's out there, it would be worthwhile.
Yes, yes.
I also, um, the things that you read and everything about, I always use the word aid, but federal funds.
Mm-hmm.
It sounds like we might, possibility because of COVID, get a little, little bit of money, a little increase there maybe?
Are you talking about in the third round of ESER money or a fourth round?
Fourth round.
Oh, yeah. I, I'm never going to say no to any money that anybody wants to give the district, but federal funds, it gets increasingly difficult to figure out ways to spend it within their framework. Um, and so what I would really like to see is local control again. I'd like the board and the administration to be able to say, this is where these funds need to be spent, and they don't have all these wonderful strings attached to them. Now, ESER money has less strings than most federal dollars. I'll give them credit for that, but there are still strings. And ESER Round 3 has more strings than ESER Round 2 did. And Round 2 had more than Round 1. So it makes me a little leery of what Round 4 may be, but, I mean, you got a great team here. They'll jump through the hoops and, and figure out the strings. We'll take whatever we can get, but I would prefer, um, state funding like it should be for the kids, so.
So the ESER money, um, for the all, the all-day, um, I'm sorry, the full-day kindergarten?
Full-day kindergarten, yeah. Amy corrected me. I kept saying all-day kindergarten. It's full day.
Is there any directions that we could, yes?
I'm sorry, what?
No, I thought, I thought you said, as far as the full-day kindergarten, the ESER, well, 2 money, ESER 2 and 3 money, can any of that be applied towards our needs there because of the recovery?
So, um, we do have it built into our learning recovery plan, and you may recall from our, um, last special meeting that we had where we went over using some of those resources for salaries for our teachers to be able to fund the initiative.
Right, the additional half-day for those teachers, we're going to pick up through ESER Round 3. That's part of our learning recovery because, you know, we had to set, set aside 20% of that to do a learning, you know, way to address the learning gap.
I thought there was a question mark on it because the students were, it would be the first, you know, it would be our first year coming in, so it's not really recovery, you know?
Right. Well, these kids didn't have preschool.
It is when you look at the data, the percentage of students in our state that did not access preschool services that would have in a typical year. I, I think, um, don't quote me on this, but I think it was between 25 and 30% of Ohio children who would not, did not participate in preschool as a result of the pandemic. So it is, it can be considered learning recovery, given that.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. It helps.
Now, of course, we have to, we've submitted our plan, but we've got to do our budget and get all that sent off and wait for them to approve everything. Um, but I don't see any reason why it would not be approved as part of the plan, as Amy pointed out.
Thanks.
All right. Next we'll go to the approval of the adoption revision of board policies. It is recommended to, that the Board of Education waive the first reading of the following board policy. Non-discrimination on the basis of sex grievance procedures, file ACA-R. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval to waive the first reading of the board policy of non-discrimination on the basis of sex grievance procedures.
Second.
Damn, you did it.
Okay, so first by Toadvine, second by Lewis.
So, um, we recently had a training with our council on our Title IX sex discrimination policy practices. Um, and in preparation for that, we discovered that when we did our full adoption of all the new policies that were connected to the law change for sex discrimination, this one was missed. Um, and it's just the, um, it lays out the process. So if someone were to file a complaint, this is the process that you would have to go through. So, um, the, the policy is already there. This is just a regulation that goes along with the policy. So we're just asking that you waive the first reading and just go ahead and adopt, um, the, adopt the policy as, I'm sorry, the regulation as is. And it's all prescriptive by law. So, I mean, that, those processes, we don't have any choice in, in the way those lay out.
Roll call. Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Next we have the approval of adoption, the revision of board policies. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following board policies. Non-discrimination on the basis of sex grievance procedures, file ACA-R. Therapy Animals, file ING-R-2. Do I have a motion?
I'll move for the approval of adoption, revision of board policies.
Second.
Okay, first by Lewis, second by Amsler.
Yeah, so you waived the reading on the first one, and then the Therapy Animal we had last month, the reading on it.
Roll call. Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Next we move on to the consent agenda and the approval of overnight extended student trips. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the overnight extended student trips. Gabe Brown, Ryan West, Mike Nilson, Kevin Murphy, Steve Cole, Jeff Lakes, Chris Amsler, Doug Cortman, for the Freshmen Bowl in Campbell County, Kentucky, at Campbell County, Kentucky High School, August 21, 2021. Next we have the approval of out-of-state travel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve out-of-state travel for Gabe Brown, Ryan West, Mike Nilson, Kevin Murphy, Steve Cole, Jeff Lakes, Chris Amsler, Doug Cortman, for the Freshmen Bowl in Campbell County, Kentucky High School, August 21, 2021. Next we have the approval of National School Breakfast, Lunch, Snacks, and Beverages Program. It is recommended that the Myamisburg Board of Education approve the National School Breakfast, Lunch, Snack, and Beverages Program. Next we have the approval of lunch prices. It is recommended that the Board of Education establish lunch prices for the 2021-22 school year as follows. The elementary breakfast, $1.30; the lunch, $2.50; milk, $0.60. For the middle school, $1.60 for breakfast, $2.85 for lunch, and $0.60 for milk. At the high school, breakfast would be $1.70, $3.05 for lunch, $0.60 for milk. And then the adult breakfast would be $1.75, the lunch would be $3.60, and the milk would be $0.60. Then next we go to, wait, at this time, I'll read this too. Oh, I know, never mind. Okay, never mind, okay. Approval of student handbooks for the 2021-22 school year. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the student handbooks for Maddox Lane Primary School Elementary, which is K through 5, Myamisburg Middle School, and Myamisburg High School for the 2021-22 school year. And next we go to the adoption revision of job description. And that would be for the technology supervisor. And then, next we go to, okay, extracurricular code of conduct and athletic fan code of conduct.
I move we approve the consent agenda items A through G.
I have a question.
After I made the motion, you can.
Okay, so.
Second.
Okay, so first by Angel, second by Toadvine. And Mr. Lewis?
Yes, I, one question I have is, usually I know exactly what it is when, for out-of-state travel and stuff, what is the freshman bowl?
I know you're looking at me because my name's attached to it. I am, and when I stepped down as the freshman head coach, I haven't talked to Lance lately, and I know he's out of town currently right now. Uh, I could only assume that this is some sort of a scrimmage or to that nature where, uh, they go down where there's multiple teams and do a scrimmage on that particular day. So I know my name's attached to it, however, I don't know if I'm going to be actually involved in that or not. So when I go to vote, I will be, normally I would abstain, but since I'm not technically the head coach anymore, I will probably, well, I will vote in regards to the consent agenda.
Well, no, my, my understanding is that it is a series of scrimmages. Enough to be dangerous with that amount, so.
Thank you.
All right, roll call. Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, next we move on to human resources agenda items. And first we have the approval of personnel reports, certificated, classified. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. Employment in the Myamisburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and FBI criminal record check in accordance with Ohio Revised Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with adopted board policies. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of personnel reports, both certificated and classified.
Second.
Okay, first by Toadvine, second by Lewis. Any questions? Mr. Homan?
Usual business. It's, it's busy this time of the year, so.
Does this mean you're pretty much getting it wrapped up? Are you getting it wrapped up?
Not quite.
It's not as fast as that car just was.
Yeah, not as, yeah, we, we have, um, some resignations, even it's possible even other retirements still may be coming through, and, um, it's normal.
I was hoping you'd get to lie off.
Just go with the flow. Hey, it's much better than last year, so. So, I'm okay with that.
All right, roll call. Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Miss, Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Next we have the approval of personnel report supplemental stipend, certificated and classified. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel report, supplemental stipend, certificated, classified. Employment in the Myamisburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and FBI criminal record check in accordance with Ohio Revised Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with the adopted board policies. Do I have a motion?
I'll move for the approval of the personnel report supplemental.
I'll move for the approval of the Personnel Report Supplemental Stipend, Certificated and Classified.
A second. Okay, first by Louis and a second by Angel. Any discussion? Mr. Homan? Okay, roll call. Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Louis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
This is where I abstain.
All right, let's move on to agreements and contracts, and we need to have the approval of the agreement with Frontline Education Support. The Superintendent and Treasurer CFO recommend approval of the attached three-year agreement with Frontline Education Support effective July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
I'll move for the approval of agreement with Frontline Education Support. Second.
Okay, first by Amsler and second by Louis. And Mr. Homan, did you want to talk about this?
Sure, the, um, the frontline educational support, that's the, the call-in, what we call the A-S-O-P system, where teachers call in for sub, our assistants, monitors, they call in, log in online to put for the sub in. And then with the three-year agreement, there is a little bit of a discount as it goes through. And then also, we're able to use some of the ESSR money to cover this contract, so, it's a savings to the district as well using that money, so.
All right, roll call. Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Louis?
Yes.
Okay, next, let's move on to the approval of the agreement with Meta Solutions. It is recommended by the Superintendent and Director of Human Resources to enter into an agreement with Meta Solutions. Do I have a motion?
I move, we approve the agreement with Meta Solutions.
A second.
Okay, first by Angel, second by Louis.
So, this agreement is actually, it's, it's a year-long support with Meta Solutions. So, as you're aware, Teresa Greenley, who's assistant principal of the high school, will be moving into the EMIS position that Maurice held. So, what this contract does is it's a full year of mentoring with Meta Solutions. And the person, Marquita Longhorn, who has taken on the contract currently from when Maurice retired to presently, we've asked, and she's actually going to be Teresa's mentor through the process, so they've already been in contact, starting the training and the mentoring. But it includes all the supports, the training, so many hours per week. And it's, it's kind of what they call a year in EMIS and review, so every reporting period and everything before the date is submitted, and that it's reviewed with Marquita and Teresa and then submitted, so. It's a nice service that Meta offers. It gives us an opportunity to train our in-house people, and Teresa comes with a wealth of knowledge, where she knows a lot of the scheduling system already in that software, and so I think she'll be a great fit. She's very excited to join, so she's already been in, kind of getting ready, you know, ahead of time, so.
That's good.
Yeah. Roll call. Mr. Louis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Okay, next, we move on to the approval of the agreement with the Warren County Educational Service Center. The Superintendent and Treasurer CFO recommend approval of the attached agreement with the Warren County Educational Service Center for the services to be provided during the 2021-22 school year. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of agreement with the Warren County Educational Service Center.
Second.
Okay, first by Amsler and second by Toadvine. And Mrs. Lucas?
I'm going to have Tina help me out on this one a little bit, but in the past, we've always had a intervention specialist, full-time intervention specialist, that Bishop Libel has used their auxiliary funds to pay for. And because the auxiliary funds were the financial agent for that, we, they would become our employee. They have asked to reduce that to a part-time position, so we are going to have them contract with Warren County, since it's really, it's really difficult for you to find a part-time intervention specialist. And obviously, we don't, we didn't, we don't have anyone that's part-time here that we could lend to them. But I know there's some changes that are coming around in auxiliary funds, and I'll let Tina kind of talk about how that's going to impact that potentially.
Well, House Bill 110, which is the biennial budget, includes language that allows non-publics such as Bishop Libel to manage their own auxiliary funds. So you, the district would no longer be the fiscal agent. So, if that is indeed what happens, then this contract would be null and void. But while we're still their fiscal agent, and so that they can get the services that they need, we need to have the contract approved.
Does that mean they'll have to hire a treasurer on their own?
I don't know. I, I don't know what it means. I mean, we have staff that are Bishop Libel, that are Myamisburg staff, so that'll be something that we have to look at, whether they hire them directly, whether the employees want to be hired directly. And it'll, it'll, yeah, there'll be, it'll be some bumps in the road that we have to travel down, but in the interim, we're going to proceed as we do usually and hope that, you know, they'll get all those things answered for us. Because they really, ODE doesn't even know at this point what the transition plan would be.
All right, roll call. Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Louis?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Next, we move on to D, the approval of the agreement with Green County Educational Service Center. It is recommended by the Superintendent and Director of Student Services to enter into an agreement with the Green County Educational Service Center. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of the agreement with the Green County ESC.
Second. Okay, first by Toadvine and second by Angel. Mrs. Lucas?
So, the Green County ESC program that we're talking about is the Project Life Program. We've, there are several different programs like this in Montgomery County and Warren County, Project Life, Project Search. It's a deferred diploma-type program for older students. So we have a student who's being placed in this program for next year, so this is the contract for that agreement.
Is 22 the restricted age on that?
Yeah, because the, in Ohio, they can only be educated up to the 22nd birthday, so, yeah.
Roll call. Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Louis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Um, next, we move on to the approval of the agreement with BSN, BSN Sports. The Superintendent and Treasurer recommend approval of an agreement with BSN Sports. Do I have a motion?
I move for the agreement, the, the approval of the agreement with BSN Sports. Second.
Okay, a first by Toadvine, a second by Amsler.
Um, this agreement was brought to us by Mr. Osborne and Mr. Shade, I assume, and it's really an inventive way of raising some additional revenue. With COVID, athletics did have a hard time selling tickets, so revenues were, you know, a little less than expected, putting it lightly. So this is a way for them to create another revenue stream, so.
All right, roll call. Mr. Louis?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes. Tina, was that similar to the spiritware that they continue to order?
They will be our primary provider, pretty much our only provider of spiritware for the athletic department. Now, that doesn't, it doesn't apply to PTOs, PTAs, or boosters, but anything that the district, you know, provides, so, yes.
That's what I thought.
It's the kickback rebates that they can get on it.
Yeah.
Kickback's a bad word.
I know, kickback, that's probably not, I shouldn't say. The, uh...
It's a rebate program.
Rebate program, there we go. Way to get revenue, there we go.
There you go.
And BSN is good, if there is a product they can't get or something else, they, they will help you, you know, work through that product process as well, so. They've been very good, good to us and have been good with deals, you know, so.
Sorry, Mr. Amsler.
No, no, you're good.
All right, approval of the agreement with South Community Incorporated SCI for mental health services. The Superintendent recommends approval of the agreement with South Community Incorporated SCI to provide school-based mental health services for students in the Myamisburg City School District for the 2021-22 school year. Do I have a motion?
I move, we approve the agreement with South Community Incorporated for mental health services.
Second.
Okay, first by Angel, second by Louis. Mrs. Lucas?
So this is the South Community contract that we use our Success and Wellness Dollars to support for mental health services for our students in the district. It is a slight reduction from last year, and we did, after we've been with them for about a year and a little more than a year, we don't have the, quite the demand that we thought we did, so we've gone from three to two. But we're, because their caseloads just weren't, weren't calling for that. But in the meantime, we're hopeful that the governor will keep the Success and Wellness Dollars separate out of the, out of the budget and potentially be able to use that to continue our work with the ESC and the SEL consultant and to be able to increase those services so that we're still providing the supports that are currently in the most demand for our students. So that we still will have two mental health therapists in the district that students will be able to be referred to. But then, we're hoping to be able to increase SEL supports as well, so.
Montgomery County?
Yeah, Montgomery County ESC. It's the work Clarissa, she presented for you guys, the work she's been doing, so we're hoping to be able to expand on that, because that's really been good, moving us in the right direction, so.
Roll call. Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Louis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Okay, next, we move on to the approval of the customer agreement with Ticket Spicket. So, yeah, I don't know what it is, but do I have, I tried to read through the attachment, still didn't get it, so, oh, well. All right, do I have a motion?
That's going to be a fun one to give. I move for the approval of the Ticket Spicket.
Second.
Tone twister.
Is that you, Mr. Amsler?
Uh, sure.
Okay, all right. First by Toadvine, second by Amsler.
This is something for the athletic department. It was added last minute, so I apologize. It's an online ticketing service where you can buy tickets online and get your little QR code, if I use the right terminology. And then, you know, with COVID, everybody started going to, you know, an online ticketing service, and this is the service that Jason and Jason wanted to go with, so.
What, any, any of the sporting events, they'll be able to buy a ticket?
Yes, and I'm, yeah, hopefully, it will expand beyond athletics, so it'll be theater programs, you know, other things as well, so.
Home and away games, everything?
Yeah, I, I assume so, yes, yeah. That is what I've been told.
The reason why I asked that was because I know this, how the state is about, you know, they want, they want their kind of stuff down the road whenever we, you know, like whenever we do the, host any of the tournaments.
Well, I don't know if it'll work with tournaments, because the Ohio High School Athletic Association has their own ticketing system and things of that nature, so, you know, that, I, I don't know if that'll work. I don't know the logistics of that, but I know for our games and, and things of that nature, it should work. Yeah, not sure about the Ohio High School Athletic Association, they have their own...
Yeah, but they're mainly paid by the num, the number of tickets that we sell, that's, you know, that's, they get that huge percentage of it.
Right, right, yeah.
All right, roll call. Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Louis?
Yes.
All right, next, we go to the awarding of the liability, property, and fleet insurance. It is recommended by the Superintendent, Treasurer, CFO, and the Director of Business Services that the liability, property, and fleet insurance be awarded to Trident Argonaut Insurance Company, which is the local agency, Masters and Associates Insurance LLC. The appraisal value of the district is listed as $182,557,741 for this quotation. A $5 million excess liability is included in the Myamisburg City Schools' policy. The annual premium for liability, property, and fleet insurance is $215,123. The cyber insurance is awarded to Chubb Insurance, which is through our local agency, Masters and Associates Insurance LLC, with an annual premium of $9,803. The complete policy is effective for 12 months from 7/1/22 to 7/1/21, and has an annual premium of $224,926. Do I have a motion?
Is that the one, 22?
Yeah, that's why I was hesitating.
122.
Yeah, it should be 21, 22.
Okay, all right. All right, do I have a motion?
I move, we approve the awarding of liability, property, and fleet insurance.
Second.
Okay, first by Angel, a second by Amsler. And next, we move to the approval.
Whoa.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Sorry, guys. Roll call.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Louis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Okay, now, we move to the approval to participate in the EPC bus bid process. Myamisburg City School Board of Education wishes to participate and authorizes the Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Council to advertise and receive bids on said board's behalf as per the specifications submitted for the cooperative purchase of school buses. Do I have a motion?
I'll move for the approval to participate in the EPC bus bid process.
Second.
Okay, first by Louis and a second by Toadvine.
This is our standard resolution that we pass every year, just in case we're lucky enough to buy one, two, or three buses. I think this year is part of our ESSR round three, we're hoping to buy two or three additional buses, we need some handicap buses, and possibly looking at vans as well. So we just need the board to pass the resolution so we can participate in that bidding process rather than doing it all on our own.
Yeah, I think Scott said something about it last month.
Yes, at, at the June 8th meeting, yeah.
Roll call. Mr. Louis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Okay, next, we move on to financial agenda items. A, approval of transfers, school fees waived. The Treasurer CFO recommends the Board of Education approve the following transfers. These transfers are for school fees waived during April through June 2021. All transfers are made in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 5705.14. So the April-June fee waivers from the general fund, Uniform School Supplies Bauer, $150, Uniform School Supplies Bear, $60, Uniform School Supplies Kinder, $90, Uniform School Supplies Jane Chance, $60, Uniform School Supplies... Uniform School Supplies Mark Twain, one hundred and eighty dollars. Uniform School Supplies Mound, ninety dollars. Uniform School Supplies Medlar, thirty dollars. Uniform School Supplies Myhamsburg Middle Middle School, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Uniform School Supplies High School, two thousand two hundred dollars and fifty cents. Class fees High School, twelve dollars. Class fees High School, two dollars. Class fees High School, fourteen dollars. Class fees High School, eight dollars for a total of three thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty cents. Do you have a motion?
I move for the approval of transfers, school fees waived.
Second.
Okay, first by Amsler, second by Louis.
This is our quarterly waiver that we do for all students that qualify for free and reduced. I provided the charts for you as well. As you can see, we last year we had fifty-three thousand eight hundred and five dollars roughly in waivers for the whole year and this year it dropped to thirty-one thousand nine hundred and forty. The primary reason for that is because everyone's on free meals this year, so we're not getting the applications. And so without the applications, we can't determine whether you're eligible for a fee waiver. So we're looking at a new way to do that, at least for next year, since next year they're already approved free meals for everyone again, so that we can make sure that those kids that qualify do get the the waivers, so.
Roll call. Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Next we move on to the approval of advances for fiscal year two thousand twenty, twenty-one. The treasurer CFO recommends the board of education approve the following advances for fiscal year two thousand twenty, twenty-one. The advances are required in order to eliminate fund balance deficits at fiscal year in accordance with Ohio Revised Code. So all of these are from the general fund, a psychology intern, ten dollars. The Esser slash Keers, two thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-one cents. IDEA, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. Preschool Restoration, one hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-nine cents. PCE Special Education, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and seven cents. Tournament Proceeds, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and no cents. And the total amount is three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-nine cents.
I move for the I move for the approval of the advances be I believe it should be fiscal year twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two. Correct?
No, it's for this year.
Is it? Okay.
It's for twenty-one. It's for twenty twenty-one, so it's for this school year. I have to close the books and I can't have a deficit. I got as much of the money as I could, so we came up just a little bit short, three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. So I just need to advance from the general fund into those grants until I'm able to make a request in July because ODE shut everything down on June fifteenth.
Okay.
All right, do I have a motion? They all made the motion. Okay, who did the second? Anybody?
Second.
Okay, first by Toadvine, second by Louis. Just go ahead to roll call. Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Next we'll move on to authorization for amendment to the fiscal year two thousand twenty, twenty-one appropriations and certificate of estimated resources. It is recommended by the treasurer CFO that the fiscal year two thousand twenty, twenty-one appropriations and certificate of estimated resources be amended as listed in the attached reports. Do you have a motion?
I move for the authorization for the amendment to the FY twenty, twenty-one appropriations and certificate of estimated resources.
Second.
Okay, first by Angel and a second by Toadvine.
These are hopefully the final revenue estimates for this fiscal year and the final budget revisions for this fiscal year. As I said, June's preliminary, so it could change for, you know, in July, but I tried to cover all our bases, so.
All right, roll call. Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Next is the authorization for permanent appropriations for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. It is recommended by the treasurer CFO that the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two permanent appropriations be approved as outlined in the attached report. Do you have a motion?
I move for the authorization for permanent appropriations for fiscal year twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, first by Louis, second by Toadvine.
Last month you approved temporary appropriations so that if I didn't get permanent appropriations done this month, we could still meet payroll and and pay all the bills in the month of July. So this is permanent appropriations, so this gets the ball rolling for us so that I'm allowed to spend up or your treasurer is allowed to spend up to this amount until, you know, and any revisions have to be presented to the board.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Uh, yes.
Okay, next we have the settlement agreement with Target. It's revised. The dollar amount is twenty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and seven cents. The treasurer CFO recommends the board of education approve the attached revised settlement agreement with Target. Do you have a motion?
I move for the settlement agreement with Target revised.
Second. Okay, first by Amsler, second by Angel.
If we approve this, you you approved this once before and, you know, attorneys got a hold of it and so there was a revision, so any revisions require your approval. Just some minor language changes. Didn't change the amount of the settlement or anything.
All right, roll call. Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, next we move on to the settlement agreement with Pinnacle Architects. The treasurer CFO recommends the board of education approve the attached revised settlement agreement with Pinnacle Architects Incorporated. Do you have a motion?
I move.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I move for the settlement agreement with Pinnacle Architects Incorporated.
Second.
Okay, first by Louis and a second by Toadvine.
This is another settlement agreement for property valuation, so we're gonna get a direct pay. So just need your approval.
Okay, roll call. Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, next G settlement agreement with Centerville Hospitality. The treasurer CFO recommends the board of education approve the attached revised settlement agreement with Centerville Hospitality.
I move that we approve the settlement agreement with Centerville Hospitality.
Second.
All right, first by Toadvine, second by Louis.
This is um, this is a different one. Doesn't have a dollar value attached, but we agreed on property values that we would stipulate to. This is a hotel which was hit pretty hard by COVID, but sold during the pandemic. So it's based on the sale price of the actual hotel. So we've stipulated to values for twenty, twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two, so you would be paid based on those values. And they've agreed not to file any complaints related to COVID loss or anything like that. So it it secures the district's property values and and revenues for you for the next three years.
Where are we at with the mound? Appeals?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
I don't wanna mention any names.
Yeah. Um, I have not heard, but I think that, you know, the BOR Board of Revisions said that the counter complaint was filed late. So it reverts back to the original values that were attributed to it, so. Yeah, they made the decision that, yeah, his complaint was filed too late.
Okay. Just wondering. It was a big one.
Yes, it was.
All right, roll call. Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Okay, next we have the acceptance of donations. It is recommended that the board of education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through each school's zero-one-eight account unless indicated otherwise. The following donations were made to Myhamsburg City Schools for the Campus Quest Project in memory of Karen Pompous. Fifty dollars from the Myhamsburg High School class of nineteen sixty-one. Two hundred dollars from Ron and Jane Marcella and Herb and Kate Steiniger. And twenty-five dollars from the Terrell family, okay. Do you have a motion?
I move we accept the donations.
Second.
Okay, first by Angel and second by Louis. I just wanna say, you know, my sympathies to the Pompous family. That was a very supportive family of our schools for sure. And their son, I think, is the athletic director in Beaver Creek.
Correct.
Yes.
Brad.
Okay, roll call. Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Now we go to the information only part, the appointment of board delegates to OSBA for the two thousand twenty-one Fall Conference and for other requested meetings. The board of education appoints the following board members as the official delegate and official alternate to the OSBA delegates meeting at the two thousand twenty-one OSBA Capitol Conference and other such meetings as may be requested of the position. All official delegates may speak and vote on all resolutions and other business. So our official delegate and official alternate.
Typically, it's the board president that's the official delegate.
Okay, and it will be in person this year. So and then Ms. Christie, official alternate, Mr. Amsler?
It's up to all of you.
I don't I don't have anything going on, sure.
You won't have anything going on in November?
Nothing, nothing. Yeah, going, so I will be the alternate.
Okay, the next one is.
I'll be the alternate to the alternate.
Okay. It'll be fun going to that again. It's a fun time. It's a good time and you learn a lot. All right, nomination to the executive committee of the Southwest Region Ohio School Boards Association for the various offices which will be elected. So the nominee for that. Uh, so last year was, were you?
I thought it was Tim.
Sharon Angel was, yeah, I thought Tim was.
I was last year, was never contacted.
Yeah.
Nothing.
But there's also that something came out to fill out a form if you wanna participate in some of the regional. I'll forward you that email.
Okay, yeah, I didn't get anything.
All right, next we'll move on to the reports and first we'll have the MVCTC.
Who's did you do a nominee?
Tim.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute, why would I do it two years in a row? Because you didn't fulfill your duties the first year.
I'm not running again, so guess what?
I'll do it again. It was, you know, I enjoyed it very much this year.
Way to step up, Tim.
Heck, yes. I'll take one for the team.
All right, now for the reports. Joe Isaacovich for the MVCTC.
Good evening. I will be short and sweet tonight. We're having our annual board retreat this Saturday. Basically, we'll be talking about the district's enrollment, financial comparisons over the past fiscal years and an update on the construction project, so I'll have some more up-to-date news for you at the next board meeting. As far as construction goes, we're moving right along what we call the backbone, the two-story structures. Structures are up. That's for the classrooms. It runs north and south of the campus and basically is three football fields long. And we've given several tours that I've participated in. We have about fifteen, twenty percent of the project complete and under roof. I know we had Marty Grunder from Grunder Landscaping toured with his people for the Ag Area, FFA. We also showed them our huge diesel program building that we have. Quite impressive. Other than that, under computer coding and web applications, we had a Myhamsburg student earn the Sinclair's Fast Track Programming Short Term Certificate. It was Kian Kong Lee from Myhamsburg. He's been well-recognized out at CTC on many occasions and got some national recognition too with a NASA project. Basically, the successful completion of the of six Sinclair courses are required to earn their certificate. And the certificate assures that individuals are equipped with current software development skills and focuses on latest software development languages and approaches, so congrats to Kian. And that's all I have unless you have questions.
Joe, I do have a question about, and I and I know it's a different entity. On the adult side, I know they do the fire program through the school. On in the adult program in the evenings, they used to run the EMS, EMT program up there. Do they do a fire program up there as well? Do you know?
You know, we listed as, I believe firefighter, EMT. I can confirm that for you and let you know for sure.
The only reason I ask, there was some students that as I was going to various graduation parties, there were some students that had graduated and they had said that they had shown an interest, but they knew through Sinclair that they could go up there, but they wanted a different option as well if that wasn't available to them based on work schedule or whatever the case may be. And I'm like, you know what? I said, I don't know the answer to that and then so I thought I'd ask you.
We do have that as part of the adult ed program. Exactly what it entails, I'm not sure, but I'll find out and let you know.
All right, thanks, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then we'll move on to the legislative legislation. Sharon Angel?
I think Tina's pretty much talked about the budget. I mean, the House approved it, the Senate didn't. They got their own bill. Now they're conferencing with the House committee. They've got less than two weeks to come up with some kind of an agreement, so hopefully it'll be something that we can live with. The only other thing that I saw that was of interest, the House has passed a bill that would create an opt-out for eleventh grade students not to take the ACT or the eleventh, not the eleventh graders to take the ACT or the SAT this year. So that could be something that our students are interested in. Hopefully in July, I'll be able to tell you we have a budget. Hopefully in July, I'll be able to tell you we have a budget. Other than that, I'm done.
Okay. Next, we have our student achievement creation. Christopher Amsler?
You have been doing the district information as well, so I'll just continue. The Myhamsburg Student District May Student of the Month is Mark Twain Elementary student Rebecca Kaufman. Normally at the beginning of the meetings, we would have honored the individuals at that particular time, and that will be done at the August board meeting. So that's why there was nothing at the beginning. So other building students of the month representatives include Bauer Elementary School Zariya Dinkins, Bear Elementary School Austin Onslinger, and Zachary Coleman, Jane Chance Elementary School Brianna Kelly, Kinder Elementary School Charlie Hayes, Meddler View Elementary School Odessa Ogbar, Mound Elementary School Maya Weinberg, Myhamsburg Middle School Jemaya Usher, Myhamsburg High School Fletcher Rose. So congratulations to all the students of the month. And then we will reckon, we will recognize Rebecca Kaufman at the August board meeting, so. Other news and district news and information, the latest Making a Difference Honors are Myhamsburg Middle School teacher Maya Downing, Diane Pressel, and Allison Sampson, Belinda Help me on that one. I know her as her maiden name. Giovanna and Stephanie Johnson nominated by Jen Peterman. Also recognized with Making a Difference Award was Crystal Rankins nominated by Tracy Barnhart. Crystal is our resource officer that we have in the building. Full nominations can be read at myhamsburgcityschools.org. Bear Elementary School staff and students collected $3,042.78 for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. The building goal was to raise 2021, so I would say they well exceeded as it's written. Principal Shannon Rupert stated that she was very proud of them all. Myhamsburg High School 21 graduate Cameron Clark was named a National Merit Scholarship winner. Cameron was one of over 3,100 winners of the National Merit Scholarship financed by US colleges and universities. Cameron will be attending the University of Kentucky this fall. Myhamsburg High School junior Seth Elking was the runner-up at the state track and field championship. Seth broke the 1,600 and the 3,200, so a mile and two mile records this season and was part of the four-by-eight-hundred team that set the school record at the district championships. Seth ran a very smart race to finish second place lowering his own personal school record in to four minutes, 13 seconds. That's, uh, that's moving.
Yes.
I never got down, down that low. Also placing in the top eight that day was junior Lenisha Wilson, who finished seventh place in 100 hurdles, and senior Martin Ogbar, who finished in eighth place at the high, uh, high jump event. Congratulations to all of our track and field competitors. And finally, the Myhamsburg High School alum Chris Myers was named the Mid-American Conference Player of the Year. Chris tied the Toledo Rockets' records with 15 home runs and batted .378 with 55 runs batted in, leading all MAC in all three categories. Chris is the first league's triple crown winner since 1998. He also earned the MAC Medal of Excellence. Individuals selected to the Medal of Excellence have distinguished themselves academically, athletically, and through demonstrated service and leadership. I know he was an unbelievable athlete here. I could only imagine that at one day we will see him on the big screen playing in Major League Baseball at some point in time.
Yeah, I think there's a good chance of that.
Yeah, so congratulations.
Okay, um, before we move on, I would like to ask the board to think about something for next year, next school year. I think it would be nice if the board would have a female and a male student of the month to recognize, you know, to be recognized, just more, have more students recognized. That's what we're all about, right?
If there's a district student of the month and it's a girl, how do you have a, I don't understand what you're trying to say.
All you have to do is put an S on that, district students of the month.
But there's one from each building, and how do you choose from them? Who's, who's?
How do we choose the one we have?
Trying to do the logistics. Who's going to choose from them? Katie, you're getting stuck with that too?
Currently, it's all in my responsibility. Each building provides us with the nominations that their building represented. And those nominations are the ones that the building's nomination for which is, um, the one that is now one of the ones recognized at the board meeting, that all of the students who are nominated as their building, um, represented by are recognized after the board meeting.
Yeah, do a male and a female, you know, and I just think that, you know, the whole idea of what we're doing is to honor the kids, and we want to honor as many of our students as we can. And I, I just think it's just a little, you know, addition that we could, could have, but I mean, the, the, you just watch those, those students when they come up here, they're beaming, either that or they're hiding their head because they're a little bit giddy. But, you know, I just think it would be kind of neat to, especially those elementary kids, I love watching them.
So essentially what you're asking for is the nomination stays the same. However, you would pick, based on the nominations from all the schools, you would pick a, one male and one female?
Yeah. Well, simple, and Katie can still do that.
All right, um, next we'll move on to the Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition creation. Tim Lewis?
No meeting in the month of June. They'll get it going again in July.
Yeah, I know they went to every other month. And then, um, Mr. Amsler already did the district news and information. Thank you. So now it's time to go around the table. Start with Toadvine?
Yep, I'd just like to thank all of our administrators and our staff. When I say staff, I'm talking about everybody, classified and certified, for what I thought was the most difficult year that we've ever encountered. And I just think that you guys did a fabulous job of, you know, there was a lot of tears, and there was a lot of people that were mad, and there's a lot of, you know, there's all kinds of emotions that were put into play by parents and students. And I just think that you guys did a fabulous, fabulous job, so. That's all I have to say.
I definitely agree with Dale on that. Also wanted to give another congratulations to Jennifer Schneider and Karen Vingress on their retirement. We, um, we've had a lot of excellent people retire this year. Hopefully everyone hits the ground running and enjoys that. Also wanted to congratulate all of our spring sports. Lot of success. We were very well represented. Thank the coaches, the parents, support personnel that, you know, that everyone involved to run our spring sports, and we were represented very well by our athletes this year.
I'll be brief. I'll concur with everything you guys have said. And, and I know additionally, I know we have a, as a staff, we have a short summer this year. June 10th, August 10th, maybe. So I know that's like 60 days of speed summer. And then we still have staff, you know, doing things inside the, the, the schools as well. So their summer is shortened. But I want everybody to have a safe and enjoyable summer. It has been a stressful year, but hopefully when we come back, don't know what the new normal is, but I'm sure that it's going to be, um, hopefully something that you recognize from the future, so, and the past. So with that being said, I'll move it on.
Ditto what you all said about thanking the staff. I did want to give some recognition to Kathy Gilkinson, our attendance officer. I talked with her, and according to Kathy, out of 16 districts in Montgomery County, we come in as the sixth highest district for attendance. And we don't really trail, we barely trail behind the other five. So it was an interesting talk. In a normal year, she submits about 150 attendance plans required by law. This year, she wrote and submitted 565 attendance plans during COVID to ensure the success of our students. Her work includes writing the plans, sending warning letters, face-to-face meetings with parents, phone calls, and home visits. She is assisted at times by Sally Royer, staff members, and also safety resource officers. So I just wanted to thank her for all the work she does and all the people that work with her, you know, to, for instilling such good attendance in our students. Yeah.
Anne?
Yeah.
Just real quick, I worked with Kathy real close for four years, and I agree with you 100%. She works extremely hard, and it's, for her, she works during the school day, but there's a lot of work before and after the school day too that goes along with that job, but she does a very good job of it.
Well, somebody said, um, on the last school report card, we had attendance rate from 94.4% to 96.4%. It's depending on each subgroup, and that's pretty high. And it's true that we just barely trail behind those other five districts. So that's something to be really proud of.
I'll just say ditto to what everybody said. Congratulations to all the retirees. I wish you well on all your work this summer. I know it's not going to be easy in the shortened time period you have. I do want to say something about graduation. I was under the weather and could not attend that day, but I have heard nothing but good things, even with the heat, even with the cicadas. I mean, the parents that I have talked to, the grand, mostly grandparents, they are thrilled that they were able to have it and everybody be there at the stadium, and they just thought that's the best thing they've ever done. So thank you to all of you who made that happen. Michael Black especially. That's it.
Just going to keep an eye out for the budget. Hopefully we'll hear something soon and get the year closed and the new year open. So hopefully those, those things will happen without any big incidences or anything. That's crazy, so. Wish everybody a nice summer.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak? Okay, all right. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, first by Angel and then second by Toadvine.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
6:27.
Wow, that's record time.